All right, um, welcome to the Avon Inn. I am one of your, I am one of your hosts, Jerome Allen.
I am another host, Tofer Wagner.
And today we have an amazing guest, um, a city council member or a city council member running, former AOC organizer, worker from 2018, and Amazon union worker. So many different accolades for you. Jonathan Bailey.
Yes. Thanks. Yeah, um, it's good to be here.
Welcome to the cast, Jonathan.
Yeah, this is like pretty cool, like our first live interview and it's uh, like the stakes are so high for you right now.
Yeah, yeah, they are totally for sure.
Are things just like crazy for you right now?
Things are crazy. I mean, I, I'm like, I happen to be like right around here, like very early, which is like kind of odd circumstance. And so that like everything also just kind of fit, you know, so I'm like happy to be here, even if I'm like packing every nook and cranny of like, of our schedule, you know?
Yeah, it means a lot that you took time out to come to our setup here.
Super cool. And for those that don't know, Jonathan is running for District 26, correct, in Queens? Which, uh, for the New Yorker, New Yorkers, the election is Tuesday, Tuesday. You need to vote by Tuesday.
Yeah, but early voting has been going for like a week now, right?
So what attached me to your campaign is that you're a former DSA co-chair. That is pretty cool.
Yeah, so like, um, after, um, after Ocasio 2018, um, I was, uh, like, actually, actually during Ocasio 2018, I was, um, elected to, uh, be our branch's, uh, membership coordinator. And then, um, uh, a while later, uh, to, to one of, being one of the co-chairs.
Wow. What would you say is like the current state of like the progressive like movement right now in New York, given your experience?
Um, so to me, I, I think that things to like really watch and kind of be concerned about. So like, we're kind of in a phase of political change where everything is still being driven by, uh, the movement's orientation to the state. Which means that, uh, there's like a lot of specific things that are going to happen because of that, right? There's going to be like, like hardcore reactions against politics that aren't, uh, easily electable. You know, we, we see like backlash is, um, against like, uh, anti-colonial projects, uh, because of that, right? Any like, any like thing that is like serving a specific, uh, group of colonized peoples, they'll generally be a more powerful group of people that is like, you know, the beneficiary of that, that, um, that colonial violence of whatever sort. And so like, they'll have a lot of power to like, you know, to try to like keep things as they are. And so like, you know, you'll see, uh, you know, colonized peoples having like this really hard struggle. And you'll see the movement will pivot from like being like, oh no, we're about it, we're on, on your side to like, ah, I don't know. Depending upon how, uh, how electorally viable, uh, that set of politics is. So that's like one thing to like look out for super hard. And two, like that, uh, there's not much actual working class power, right? There's not like many people who, like the, the amount of people who can like go on strike for a Green New Deal, for instance, is absolutely like non-existent. I mean, of course, it's like illegal to like engage in like political strikes and whatever, but like, um, it's, what's important though, is that that as a source of power is basically non-existent, which is super significant because that's the way that we're actually going to win it, you know?
Right.
So like as enthusiasm builds, we're going to continue seeing like these kind of shifts in like, oh, what politics do we support? What don't we support? Um, and like, uh, a continual like orientation to the state in order to like define what, what those, what the politics of movement politics is.
Damn. Wait, so you were involved in the unionization at Amazon, right? Like, was that like a daunting task? Cause like you were just saying, there's so many forces at play there.
Union busting going on at Amazon.
Yeah, so like, there isn't, uh, there isn't a union, um, a unionized, uh, Amazon warehouse in the US. But, like, I, I should say NLR be recognized. But, you know, some months ago, uh, Amazonians United, um, like at least, you know, chose to start representing itself as like, you know, as a solidarity or minority-based unionism, you know? Like solidarity, unionism is something that's like really foreign, um, to, to like everyone now. Because like people aren't used to having a union that's based in fighting, like its existence is, um, valid. Not because of like government recognition, but its existence is valid because the solidarity that we have with each other and our like ability and willingness to fight for change together. So like, the only org though, that has like won, like a national demand from Amazon in the US is Amazonians United. You know, we had a campaign for paid time off, uh, that started in Sacramento, spread to Chicago. And then eventually, you know, across the US, like to New York and various other, uh, spots. And like, it's that pressure that allowed us to, to change, um, you know, to, 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 I mean, win tens of millions of dollars for, for Amazon warehouse workers across the US. Which I mean, I, it's a small, it's a small start, but hey, that's real money. You can, you can bank it, like, you know?
Take a few steps back, like, so the National Labor Relations Board has to recognize a union in order for it to be, like, legitimate? That's, that's so.
So like, back in the day, um, when like, like, so a lot of people also, the, here's a other piece of this. A lot of folks still don't really like want to acknowledge that, like, unions are based in like, are, are based in socialist praxis. Like, like firmly rooted, like, um, you know, like, uh, US history is just, is just like riddled with like awesome socialists who did like, like fantastic labor. Like just amazing like labor things. International Labor Day is based upon an incident here in the US, in US history. We don't celebrate it, of course, because the US government is extremely reactionary towards like workers having solidarity together and fighting together to change our conditions. But literally, the world celebrates Labor Day together, uh, based around like, uh, a labor battle here in the US. And we're like the only ones who don't like celebrate it with folks.
Fireworks and hot dogs aren't enough.
Yeah. Fireworks and hot dogs. And yeah, no, um, definitely, definitely not.
No.
You feel like there's like a disconnect between like labor, like do all people in labor unions understand that connection to socialism and all of that? And like, is that part of the reason that some people are hesitant to get on board with it? Because like, obviously that's such like a boogeyman word for people to use.
Yeah, no, no, like totally, like, there's like straight up like reactionary unions. Or like, like instead of like recognizing, oh, I'm a part of this like long legacy for like liberation of working people across the world. Like, you know, people will think like, hey, um, you know, unknown, like, be like angry at like, you know, people coming, uh, from foreign nations where we've extracted resources out of their nations. And then they're coming here and like, people, even like a part of unions will be like, no, like, we gotta oppose this. We gotta use our workers' power to like, you know, um, like just reinforce these like, uh, like colonial relationships. And that's like, that's wild. Like it, the, those institutions were not built to do that. And like, they're being leveraged in like some pretty unashamed ways like that sometimes, like, I, I mean, I, I don't, I just like, my thinking is that it's very clear that the US like, um, throughout its history has hated the idea of, uh, workers being able to organize and fight for, for our interests. Um, and that we're willing to lie at every stage, whether it be like changing, like, you know, choosing what national holidays to recognize, you know, Labor Day, um, as it is currently, as opposed to on May Day, like the, the correct Labor Day, um, uh, to like, you know, just doing everything that can be done to distort or just completely, you know, not teach any of the history of labor struggles in the US. And I mean, it's really clear why, right? Like, um, you know, like the US has some very specific labor relations.
Yeah.
Like a history of very specific labor relations. And, you know, I know since, you know, I like, our nation's like founded on, uh, on chattel slavery being like the form of, of, of production, you know? That, that is like the basis for labor relations in the US. And like, you can still see it, uh, you know, it, it comes right down to the way that we even talk about freedom. Like, you know, like we basically define freedom as like the, the freedom to exploit others to like no end, you know?
We're actually recording this on Juneteenth.
Yeah.
And even though this is like the first year that they've like federally recognized it and stuff, like, that conversation's not necessarily happening about like labor practices, or I mean, at least not in the Biden mystery.
We had someone in the cast, um, a few episodes ago, who talked about the fact of using the word worker is radical in itself. Like it's employee or it's a barista or like it's kind of dressed up in a certain way. But at the end of the day, we are exchanging labor with a certain institution.
Yeah.
So, uh, you're, I know you're trying to like make change happen on the city council, district level, like, what's going on with the mayor race? Like our, who's the pro-worker candidate?
Yo, that's not anything that exists. It's like, like it's not, like honestly, like good, good God, who wants to talk about the mayor's race?
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. We're, we're here to talk about your city council run, but I am just curious because we've talked about Diane Morales a couple of times and we're like, wait, so without that, like what's our option here?
Yeah, I mean, look, like, so I, I tried to be like, uh, like critically supportive, you know? I like, I mean, I don't, like, I also don't like trade endorsements or that kind of thing. But like, when I was, um, on the, the NYC, uh, DSA Afro SOC, um, the Afro Socialist Caucus, forum for, for, for DSA here, I like, that was a question that came up, like, hey, what, what mayoral candidate do you support? And I, I mentioned, um, uh, Diane Morales because like she was at least like posturing for like, okay, like leftist stuff. It was like clear that she didn't want to be like framed as a leftist, you know? And like, uh, like during, uh, DSA's like Afro Socialist Caucus forum, I like was asked, uh, which, uh, mayoral candidate I supported. And I mentioned Diane Morales, um, just because she was willing to take a posture, um, of a lot of the things that we're, we're hoping to, to like get across. I mean, I think that they're, like, she comes out of the nonprofit world, you know? Like the nonprofit world is still what it is. Um, nonprofits will not save us. They haven't yet, you know, they're, they're not going to.
They'll posture for you.
Yeah, well, so like, a lot of folks don't really understand how, how the nonprofit industrial complex really like, is, is kind of like these, like wider arms of the Democratic Party. And that it serves to, uh, to ensure that like the, the power that the Democratic Party holds all kind of stays intact. And so like, it's really easy for, for leftists to, to be completely allied with, uh, nonprofits and never look like anything sketchy is happening, which is like sometimes actually bad.
Right.
Because like, you know, sometimes like, like nonprofits are, um, you know, are, are, are doing stuff that like, that they should not be doing, you know?
Well, they're usually not born out of the community, right? Like they, people coming in and assuming what people want in the community.
I, I'm less concerned about like the, like how nonprofits can be potentially colonial. I'm more concerned about just the way that they like continually reassert, uh, like the dominance of like the party, you know? Like they, they like continually act as moral justification for the party. And it's that, that bit where it exists as moral justification, that is what's dangerous to like our liberation, right? When, when like the entity that is seen as like the, the moral authority, uh, in the room is doing things that, um, you know, that, that are really like, end up going counter to the interests of the people. That's like, that's the end of the, the discussion and debate right there. Unless you have like a group of people that are actually willing to challenge that, that moral authority. And that like, that just doesn't happen. We're not at that point yet, you know? I mean, even within like leftist circles, there's such a deep crossover within like the nonprofit industrial complex that, you know, for most people who are even in leftist like circles, it's not within their interest. Like their own personal material interests, um, are like, they're, are running counter to calling out the organizations because they work for them, you know? Like it'll, it'll hurt their chances of, of, uh, like, you know, their career trajectory will be hurt by them like calling that out. And so like, even when like we see things within like the nonprofit space that are like not good or even just actively bad, a lot of it just kind of is like just overlooked because it's like, oh no, they're like the moral authority. Like, the thing about speaking truth to power is like, it's meaningful because it challenges, uh, a certain notion of, of what is good or bad. I mean, nobody calling out Trump does jack shit. Like, it's, it's like, that's like, everybody's on board, you know? Like, um, within like, like liberal spaces, like it's safe. And so everybody also does it, you know? Like diving into, um, uh, where like, where, where that, that's something that, diving into where that's a risk is something else, you know? Something else entirely.
So other than the apparent, um, what led you to run for the, the position? And like, what's your background and how, how is this influenced? Like, how did you become your specific like political stance?
Yeah, um, well, for me, there's like a lot of ins, like, uh, instances within my life that like kind of brought me to this. I mean, I'll tell you, I did not want to be a political activist. Like, I, I like got here like dragged kicking and screaming. I wanted to be a dancer. I'm like, yeah, I, I wanted to be a ballroom dancer. I wanted to be, uh, like, um, uh, you know, I know that's like super odd and super weird and very specific.
That's so cool.
But like, it is so cool. Don't even know. I know when people laugh at me every time when I tell them, but like, seriously, it's, it's the best. It's the best. And like, I, you know, but, um, like there, there's just like a lot of instances. I, I like told people like, you know, like why, like, why are you adamant against, you know, like fighting ICE? Like, you know, I was like, um, uh, like my family was like broken up and like, you know, like experiencing being like, like forcibly separated from your family is a, is a very, um, it's a radicalizing experience. And, um, uh, for me, like, I also, um, during the Great Recession, um, I, uh, I was like homeless through, through that like period. Like, I mean, like a lot of us were, you know? But, um, uh, at that, what a lot of folks actually don't know is that a majority of, um, of black, black boys end up being homeless in their like, you know, in their like early adulthood. Uh, you know, black folks that are going through, um, or who've gone through like the foster, uh, care or adoption like systems. Like it's actually literally a majority of us that end up homeless, which is crazy. That's like crazy as like a statistic. But then of course, with the, with the Great Recession being what it was. So like during that period of my life, I also experienced a lot of interaction with policing, um, which, of course, is like its own radicalizing experience. And, um, for me, that really took me to like, like figuring out, okay, this is not okay. And I know that people have like fought this kind of stuff before in the past. So like, that eventually took me through like the Black Liberation Movement, like everything from, uh, you know, like the, you know, awesome like non-violent stuff of Martin Luther King to, uh, the like, uh, like revolutionary ideas and practices of the Black Panthers, which, you know, takes you through socialism, uh, and like, you know, developing an analysis of the way that, uh, like colonialism and, uh, the exploitation of workers is all connected. And so for me, like, that's kind of how I got to socialism. I like, I, in a lot of ways, I still feel like we're, a lot of us are trying to figure out what is like the socialist home. I think that like DSA is like the most viable option at the moment. And so like, you know, I, I was convinced to go all in on DSA for at, at least as long as I've been there, you know?
Are there a lot of other candidates from DSA running right now in this election? Like?
So, um, so yeah, there's three other DSA members that are running for city council. They all joined during my time as co-chair of the, the branch, you know? I mean, but like, of course, right? Like the district is like 40%, uh, New York 14, Alexandria is, uh, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez's district. Like, uh, you know, it also was like, you know, it was like a slam dunk as far as, uh, the district attorney's race, Tiffany Caban, um, you know, like back in 2019. So it's like, there's like, um, there's a lot of things like going on with it that are like, oh yeah, this is like a DSA district. And so of course, like a lot of people joined DSA in that time, you know?
For those, for those listening, because we haven't actually said what DSA is, Democratic Socialist Association.
Right.
Democratic Socialists of America.
Of America, I'm sorry.
You're good. Yeah, uh, Democratic Socialists of America, uh, uh, the largest socialist organization, uh, in the US currently.
Yeah, I feel like as soon as I, I mean, mostly around like the Bernie Sanders campaign and then obviously the Ocasio-Cortez campaign, it doesn't seem like socialism is that radical to people in our generation at all anymore.
Oh, definitely not. And especially like, there's even like a, like, this race more than anything has like showed to me like a, a split that kind of also exists between, uh, like millennials and Gen Z, you know? I, I mean, I really appreciate folks who are just willing to fight and like, you know, who are willing to be in a space where like, they're, they're like bringing attention to, uh, the less than fantastic aspects of the way that we're going about fighting for, for liberation, for the end of exploitation. And like, there's just so many like Gen Z, like kids run around like with their like socialist revolutionary sentiment. And I'm just like, wow, like, this is dope.
They're out there for sure.
There's something about the TikTok radicalized crowd that is like pretty, it's pretty cool that information has become so democratized that like, when we were coming up, we would have, when we were coming up, law, like we're so old. Early 2010s, it was, um, I don't know, I feel like I didn't hear that information or I didn't have the language to speak to like, show socialist practices yet. Yet now I can find on Instagram like that.
But it is also interesting to think about the idea of like radicalization, because I know a lot of people will say that like, you go to college and then you get like indoctrinated or somebody like pulls you aside and is like, forces you to be a Marxist all of a sudden or something. But like what you were saying, like some people literally like experience these things, like they're not, like they're not told that policing is terrible. Like they've experienced it and like, and that's like the majority of people, I think, that get radicalized, like are actually lived experience.
Yeah, like, I know, I like, okay, so like, I, I get told that there's no like real like reason, like there, okay. For instance, ICE, um, you know, like, I, I've been, I've been told that like, there's no real reasons why like people are, end up going like hard against that. And it's like, well, there's a lot of people who are, um, uh, who are motivated just by like, you know, their, their empathy for people, which is good, like that's enough. If that's enough to fight, then that is enough. You know, there, there's a lot of people who've experienced, uh, um, you know, that like, our, our society isn't exactly like, for, for all of our, our discussion of values, our society isn't actually friendly to families, you know? I mean, I, like, I, I tell people, like literally, I was like dragged kicking and screaming, uh, uh, like from, from like, you know, from my like siblings, you know, from my sisters, I'd like, I like, I'm pissed, like, I like, I, I'm, I'm like, there's, there's like legit fucked up shit that is just constantly the practice here. And, you know, anybody who remembers that, like, is obviously going to be like carrying it with them. Like we're kind of undergoing a transition of like, where people, um, kind of like just keep that like with them to be like, no, this was wrong and like, I'm gonna do something about it, you know? And like, that's gonna be like a really hard, uh, I think, like reckoning for, for the US. Because there's lots of people with like, with these stories that just like, you know, that just haven't had the power to do anything about it, or at least believe like, no, I can't fight. And there's a lot more people that are like, no, I can fight, you know, I'm going to. And the more that that happens, like, I mean, like, we're gonna change some stuff. We're going to change, we're gonna change things.
And so for the position you're running for, which is a city council member, like you're specifically targeting working on the budget. Do you have any like ideas on like how, or not the budget, I guess, like, sort of like creating where money is appropriated? Not creating, but anyway, what's your like?
I mean, I'll tell you, as far as like policies that I'm like super excited about, the things I'm most excited about, um, so I think here's like the problem with the way that we do electoral activism, you know? I know, I've had this debate, uh, with, um, other like, uh, ex-Ocasio 2018 folks. Where like, there's, there's kind of this, I don't know, really absent, but kind of like sort of mobile debate, uh, debate around like, uh, organizing versus mobilizing. And like, it, it's, I think, really important because like the complete, like, the complete like layout of the field for like left spaces is the way it is because of our history of transitioning from an organizing-based strategy to a mobilizing-based strategy. So back in like the early, uh, 1900s, like, we were all like focused around like organizing, which is significant because it reconstitutes the relationships of working people. Like, like for instance, what it takes to like, uh, to like sign a petition or like pass out a flyer for a candidate is something different than what it takes to like go on strike, you know? Like striking is like, is, is a different thing, especially, especially like back then, especially like before the National Labor Relations Act, where like people went on strike, literally not knowing if they were gonna be fired or not, right? Like, it was completely based in the solidarity that they had for each other. Like, it was completely based around this idea that, okay, if enough of us do this together, then there's no way they can fire us. And if we can stop the, the wheels of production, whether that's just a striking or like physically shutting things down, then the company is going to have to respond to our request. Like, that's so radical. Like, people like don't, like, we don't even talk about that. Like, it's so cool. It's so cool.
Also throughout history, that's, those are the only times it actually works, right? Building a coalition does nothing if you just, like, you have a bunch of signatures now.
Well, so like, so the the reason why like we hear all of these people say, build a coal, a a device, a diverse, uh, coalition of organizations and people. And like, the reason why people talk like that is because, um, because like we shifted away from an organizing strategy that reconstituted new, uh, institution, like working class institutions, to one that's based, um, uh, in mobilization, right? Like, so those institutions exist. And then you just like, you know, push them to go out for stuff, right? And like that is like, I think, um, that that like as we like, like shifted and pivoted to that. Um, uh, you know, we 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 like lost that, like the like the the spade work. You know, like the deep stuff where we're like actually like reconstituting new working class institutions. And when you're just pushing people to go out for stuff, if those institutions exist and they're strong, then you can do that. That works, right? But as those institutions start to like, uh, deteriorate, like, if they erode in any way, um, then you you can't do that anymore. You don't, that's not like a viable strategy. And as our working class institutions have started to erode, um, we don't have those things. And you can see this, like, n- nowhere where do you see this more clearly than I think within NYSHA? Uh, within i- in New York, like, you know, we have six hundred thousand people who live in public housing. Um, one of the coolest thing that like socialists were able to bake into NYSHA from its founding was like, uh, section nine rights, uh, rights to democratic control of the neighborhood. Um, which is like so cool and so radical. But like, as the demographics changed within public housing, uh, from from predominantly white to predominantly black, a lot of those, uh, a lot of those powers that were embedded into it just kind of like faded away, right? We don't call them resident councils or resident council presidents anymore. We call them tenants unions or tenants associations. No, a resident council has legal powers, has specific protections, you know? There's power there. That election is a federal election, like, like Congress, you know? It's something significant. And, um, you know, but like the conversation around is, oh, the tenants association, the tenants unions, which obscures those rights. Um, and like the the lack of like support and investment in that has resulted in like very weak uh, institutions within like public housing that don't have the ability to to fight for things that the community wants. I've, for for years, I've talked to folks at Queensbridge, you know, the largest public housing, uh, in the US. Uh, you know, Ravenswood and Woodside, um, houses. And not one person has ever experienced, like, not one person I've ever spoke to has experienced having like, uh, a proposal of some kind, bringing it to their resident council, people voting on it. And then it moving forward or being rejected in some way. I I haven't met a single person who's experienced that. And of course, because like there's an act of assault on these working class institutions. Especially when they are in the hands of of like, you know, black working people in the US. Especially like if these institutions exist in the hands of like the black working class, oh yeah, that's like a no. Um, because, you know, those institutions specifically have a history of of doing some pretty radical stuff. Um, and, uh, you know, them being leveraged in that way to create that type of change is like, you know, that's like a threat to the way that we have built our society. So, um, for me, like, the most excited the thing that I'm most excited about is, uh, trying to reestablish the Queensbridge Resident Council. Um, I'm excited about, um, uh, trying to revitalize those those as like working class institutions. I'm excited about the prospect of trying to connect them to things like, uh, Amazonians United. You know, our our solidarity based union at Amazon, you know, they're opening up an Amazon warehouse right next door to Queensbridge. Yeah, like next door, like you can s- like you can spit and land on it, you know? Um, uh, and like, I'm like, okay, the potential for building this way is huge. Um, if we like connect our housing struggles to our labor struggles in that way.
Residents council, then they'll they'll know what they deserve as a laborer as well.
Imagine people going to Amazon from an already like politicized standpoint. Like, going to Amazon already like, like politically oriented, you know? Like, you can't, you you can't pay for that. Like, that's like, that's so good. And like it furthermore being like, there's a difference when it's like, you know, there's like, uh, there's like like, there's a lot of solidarity from like folks, uh, from various class backgrounds in terms of like fighting for these things. But like, honestly, like, when somebody has like the class interests to fight and they are prepared, they like have the 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 knowledge and the support necessary to fight to change their conditions, um, that can't be like I can't talk about how how significant that is. Because the result of that is inevitably and only fighting for those class interests. And that's like, that's awesome. That's so good. Like, it's so much better than like setting things up in a way that like facilitates like like careerism, right? Like electoral work oftentimes like results in like career based, uh, like personal ambitions, um, because it changes your class interests, you know? Was like, trying to win an election will, you know, sometimes make people bail on, uh, on like various like issues, like, you know, okay, yeah, I I get it, black America, but not right now, I'm running for, I'm running for office. Like, yeah, I get it, Palestine, I'm sorry, not right now, I'm running for office, right? Um, but, uh, but like, when somebody's in a position where like only their class interests are represented on that line of struggle, you get something entirely different and that's so cool. And if we're like working to like rebuild these working class institutions, the resident council connecting it to these labor struggles, like, we're gonna reconstitute a working class movement that's actually able to take us towards like liberation from uh, exploitation and like the end of like colonial violence, like police violence or or any other form that colonial violence takes. And that's like, that's exciting. That's, that's exciting.
Well, we, uh, we gotta get you out of here. Like this, I could listen to you all day. You give me so much hope. Passionate you are about it and you're like excited about the prospects of like something actually getting done. I just want more socialists in New York. But I guess that's part of the mobilization, right, is like getting people who, uh, maybe want to be a ballroom dancer but could
Yeah, I know, that's.
But you can still go, you can still be a dancer.
So, so just so that people are are aware, like, the reason why that like kind of stopped being a thing is the World Dance Sport Federation, which is like the governmental like, it's like the uh, governing institution for the world of like sport dance. Um, like decided that it was going to, uh, like, it, like, folks have been trying to get uh, ballroom into the Olympics for decades and it hasn't worked. And basically like, the World Dance Sport Federation said to the IOC, the International Olympic Committee, like, hey, like, do you want to do like breakdancing in like the Olympics? Like, would that be cool? And the and the IOC was like, you own that? And like the World Dance Sport Federation was like, if if that means that we would get to be in, yeah. And they're like, okay. And like, you know, and then like this really old like colonial institution of like, like, I mean, like, ballroom, the whole ballroom world is extremely colonial, right? Like, all, like, it's all based around like dances that are predominantly out of the African diaspora. And it's like, just like, you know, I I mean, like our our handbook is like, I think Imperial is literally in the name of our handbook, the Imperial Society of Teachers of Dance or whatever. Um, so like, you know, that's like the legacy that it comes from. And when I like saw that they were like, okay, we're gonna take over this new multi-billion dollar industry and disenfranchise, uh, folks who have been stewards of that for 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 decades. When I saw that happening, I was like, no. And like, I was very like, um, Hannah, my partner and I um, were like very, um, we were very vocal against that. And folks were basically like, okay, well, you don't need to dance then. And so I I'm probably not gonna make my like, like, uh, uh, you know, like, I I'm not gonna make my like ballroom world come back anytime soon. I it I I basically, there's just too many, there's too many things about the world, like, uh, to like make that, like make a life around those types of ambitions, I feel like. I mean, it just, it sucks. Like, I still love, love dance. Nobody, seriously, nobody loves da- like, dance more than I do. I'm I'm serious, I'm serious. Like, like, I've like, yeah, there there's, there's too much to be said there. But like, you know, we got like nine years to half carbon emissions. We got like sixteen years to have like literally a globally managed economy over our oceans. Otherwise, we're gonna end up like fishing our ecosystems into destruction, which will, which will hurt all of humanity. Because if we kill our oceans, we're all totally doomed. Like, I mean, there's just really, really big friggin problems. Um, and if we don't like, you know, I don't know, I will, I will ballroom dance up a storm after the revolution.
Um, thank you for tuning into the Avat and thank you so much to our guest Jonathan Bailey. Again, uh, New Yorkers listening and watching, uh, get out, vote. Um, definitely have, I can't think for Tofu, but you have my endorsement for sure. Not in our district, but. But, um, yeah, if you like what you saw, um, like and subscribe. If you like what you heard, leave us a review on Apple Music. Um, our, uh, theme song is by Knox Engler, the song Mend. And, um, uh, I guess just a final thought, like something you said that really stuck with me was like, it's time to mobilize, like, we can't organize, it's not always enough.